Welcome to the audience to the meeting, Board of Selectmen for July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're gonna start the meeting off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing we have no payroll or no manifest or anything, we obviously can skip that. We have no minutes for the evening, we can go through that. Boards and committees, budget I don't think has met, right, since last meeting?
We have not.
Planning Board, we did have a meeting last Wednesday, which there was a design review for a possible twenty lot subdivision that was located off one fifty-six on the Nottingham Town Line. They came in with a conceptual for the twenty lots and they came in with an open space development plan. The property was being proposed by Joe Falzone, who is a contractor that has done many, many in town, so. Under the conceptual review that we looked at, obviously the open space development was the clear choice for less impact on the environment, less impact road wise. But it's the beginning stages, so usually any time a twenty lot subdivision comes in, you'll see a good six or eight months before we actually even get to the final approval because of all the things that has to go on.
How big a lot is it?
It is a one hundred acre lot.
Hundred acre lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, one of the questions was, because they're near the aquifer that's located over across the street where the Nottingham, where the Duckway River will call it runs through by over near the Sampits.
Right.
So, it's in that general vicinity, but we didn't know if their lots were gonna be in there or not, so it was gonna primarily just looking at what's going on or what could possibly be going on there. So, there's quite a bit that's gonna be going on, but we'll be coming back with a more detailed plan of an open space development for the board. Where do we see him next, probably see him sometime in August. I don't think we'll see him at this next meeting in July, I think it'll be the one in August when we get back together. That was the big part of that meeting, we have those. So, there's a couple of big subdivisions, you know, one off Smoke Street, that's gonna be another twenty lot, this one here. Theresa Baskin did ask the meeting about setting up a we did it probably twenty years ago in this town, it was a long time ago, I don't even know if it was legal when they did it back then, but setting up like a one year period of no building so that the board can actually start revising some of the things and, you know, just go over a little things because all these new subdivisions take a long time on the planning board.
Yep.
So, it's tough to get other business done when you're seeing all these going on, so. And then I threw the fact of the SRPC that we talked about last meeting, about sending the two delegates from this board. I actually threw it towards them and said, since you guys already are there, maybe you should be looking instead of us for the candidates because that is directly involved in planning. Which their response was kind of out in the air, so I guess we'll work on that at the next meeting. Unless somebody knows somebody right now from, you know, on this board that might be somebody interested, but I don't know anybody, so.
Are you interested, John?
Don't.
I don't know anybody.
Not currently.
John, was that the place, Stratford Planning?
Stratford Planning, right. So, there's two different things with Stratford Planning that we do. This one's more on, I think, highways and byways and and more detailed on traffic and and that, it's not the same as the building side.
So, is that why they push it towards us?
Walking towards us because we're the government board, but I feel it's more a planning board issue. Instead of what I said, we have the Stratford Regional Planning Rec that comes through all those meetings. Like that, that would be more prudent for that board to be the forefront leader of who's gonna be, who they wanna see on that, who's gonna report to them.
Yep.
You know, because obviously we could get the stuff when it comes to something big like when the state wants to redo the dam on one fifty-two right past the school. Well, that's obviously, we're gonna see that and the planning board's gonna see that just because of implications of the fire and the police and, you know, time set.
What's the projected date on that bridge?
I'd have to go back and look.
Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head, but the state came in with different plans for that bridge to be, they had one plan where they said they could close the whole road down and do a run, you know, go around through Priest or whatever, that way around. And they could have the whole project done in six months. Police and fire didn't like that because of the time constraint that goes, takes going around. So, it would be probably over a year project for the state to shut down, rebuild, put it light up because we'd have to have a travel light. Since we don't have one in town, that'd be the first one ever, which is kind of weird, but but that would be the case for what they did that, so. That's the way that we were looking for it, but I don't know if the state gave us a definition of time when they were planning on doing that. I don't have that notes in front of me, so.
I think too, we were waiting if we had like a, another highway person, like the lead highway person.
Yeah, we're not, nothing to do with that.
For the, I'm saying, for the Stratford Regional Planning.
Oh, right.
We were talking about if we get that position filled with that person. Because there'd be a lot of coordination with what they're doing anyway.
CIP obviously has a meeting. So, Marston, any good going on down there?
So, the dugouts after the deluge of rain that we've had since, well, through the month of June and we weren't able to get anything done. A couple of nights over the course of the next three weeks, they're gonna get started on building the two dugouts for the softball field. NYA is ordering the gates for the two dugouts. And hopefully, the guys are gonna do a full day Saturday in August to get them completed, so at least those two dugouts will be completed.
So, will they play at all come?
Well, then, nobody plays on them in the fall, there's no fall ball in Nottingham. So, the goal would be, once they figure out, because the goal was to build those first two dugouts, figure out, okay, does all the pieces we have fit, does it work, what adjustments do we need to be made? Make those adjustments for the two that are facing the parking lot that are more, that way there if there's any, you know, issues with how they look, the two on the backside versus facing the parking lot and so.
So, trial there.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
So, yeah, so hopefully by late August, those two will be done and we can order the parts for the other two.
Will there be anything played on that this fall?
Well, flag football gets played on the field next to the baseball and softball fields.
Okay.
But they most likely use them potentially for like fall ball practice.
Just be nice to see some activity on those.
Believe me, we were hoping the month of June did not cooperate for building anything on a weekend. And that's, I mean, it's all volunteers, the only time they're available is Fridays and Saturdays and it rained pretty much every Saturday in June, so. And plus, the same volunteers are also coaching baseball and softball teams, so.
I understand, talk it straight.
Yeah.
We'll go on to Ellen about the town administrator report.
Okay. Part two of securing the fire station and the department's assets includes obtaining a quote to install a camera security system. I had mentioned this at the last meeting. I have the following quote, this been provided by Alarm Systems Plus. The quote is in the amount of eighty-two hundred dollars, it includes cameras both on the exterior of the building and two interior cameras, one in the apparatus bay and one in the main office. And it has the option to add eight additional cameras.
For the fire station?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, if this is something that you would like to proceed for, I would be requesting a motion to proceed with the installation of a camera system at the fire station and the amount of eighty-two hundred dollars as quoted was said funds to be withdrawn from the building maintenance capital reserve fund.
Is this only gonna be viewable at the fire station?
Correct.
There'll be no?
It would be, it would be a completely independent system from here because you can't access it. I think we could probably tap into it like we do the recycling center.
That's what I was gonna ask, just, and then it's, it's recordable?
Correct.
Okay.
Are they motion cameras, do we know, or are they gonna be just on twenty-four seven?
It's on twenty-four seven.
And it says you wrote here that we could add more?
Correct.
Adding more is an additional cost to the eighty?
Of course, of course.
So, I went on a tour of the police department last week and saw like what Chief Woodman has set up and the, the big screen has spots for just sixteen cameras, is basically how it's laid out. So, they could add up to the sixteen without requiring an additional monitor and stuff like that.
Just be the actual camera units and the wiring, similar to what we just did. So, we tapped into that same system to add the four cameras in the community spaces, including the kitchen and the gym and the two exterior ones.
Will this also provide, it doesn't say, it says, you know, all software, hardware, remote. Will this provide training for them to know how to use the cameras if they need to do anything to it?
Yes. Yeah, so this, this system would be installed in the chief's office, so there would be training on how to be able to get into it and do the playback mode on it. It's, it's a relatively easy system, but. I had them install, when Sean, the Public Works Director left, I had them install the recycling center feed on my computer, just knowing that we were gonna be in limbo for a little while and they went through. I, I think like a fifteen minute training and that's all I needed. I know, everybody learns differently, but.
Did we already install the?
Keypads?
Keypads.
No, the, I gave them the go ahead on Tuesday last week. He was going to get the equipment on order and I believe he said he would be able to install them within two weeks. So, we'll probably be looking at that next week.
Okay.
Do you know what the balance is in the building maintenance?
I do. So, after you had approved the ninety-nine hundred dollars for this, the keypad security system, that brings the building maintenance expendable trust fund down to thirty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
And we had a budget of eighty for that?
Well, we put ninety thousand dollars in it this year. We did the under drain repair, the recycling center furnace, the gym lights, fire department doors, the water softener at the fire department, the water pressure tank, the library furnace. We, we've done a, quite a few significant projects with that fund this year.
Yeah, we still have thirty grand left.
Correct. Well, it's, it's going to be decreasing as we go through my report.
Obviously, but trying to be optimistic here. Anybody have any more questions on the alarm system for, in the setup for the fire station?
No.
I don't have any other.
Do we want to make a motion to approve the installation of cameras?
That was my next question. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the expenditure of eighty-two hundred dollars for setting up the camera system for the fire station?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Who installed the cameras at the fire station for a total of eighty-two hundred dollars?
Thank you. I will second that motion.
Quick on the second, so. Thank you for making that clear. So, we have a motion and a second, we'll do a roll call vote.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Masruan.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay. Again, this would be, they have to order this and this would be installed in a timeframe of like two weeks too, possibly, or?
Um, I did not get the timeframe, but I will check on that when I give them the authorization to proceed.
Okay.
Item number two, the air conditioner at the library has failed and it requires replacement. I guess this was mentioned by Bodett when John Scruton was in place as the interim. And at the time, John had said, you know, we'll just ride it out because it could be sometime before it fails, but we're at the point where it failed. It was actually draining into our new furnace that we put in up there, so. Bodett was able to get that drained out, he's provided a, I don't have a formal estimate, but he gave me an estimate verbally today for seventy-two hundred dollars to replace the system. He's hoping that he might be able to get that to come in less, but that's our worst case scenario that he wanted to prepare us for. Obviously, there's, there's no air conditioning right there, right now, in the basement and.
Is it for both floors AC or does one, does one system work from the bottom?
I'm not sure either.
And I'm assuming it wasn't just the A coil froze because of lack of change in the filters? Or a plugged U trap?
Unfortunately, it does not.
Okay, he looked into all of those?
He did. He looked into it back in the spring, well, actually, it was even well before spring. It was in the winter, I believe, when they were doing the furnace and said that there was going to be problems with it. And as I mentioned, he forewarned the interim town administrator that there would be issues with it and here we are.
Who needs a compressor and probably new A coil.
Yes. If you'd like me to get more information before you proceed, I'm just, I'm looking at this as I'm giving you as much information as I have at present without actually having the written estimate with the details.
Right. Just curious, how many SEER AC? Seventy-two hundred seems pretty cheap for eighteen-twenty SEER unit.
We'll do two things, we can do, we can wait for more information or we can do a tentative approval on the balancing that not to have the expenditure over seventy-two hundred since that's what we know. So, if it comes in and it's ninety-four, we're obviously gonna have to have a, you know, whatever will happen.
Like you said, it doesn't sound like replacing the whole unit, just a couple of components because when I had one looked at for my house, it was three times as much, so I'm assuming it's just.
Right. That's what surprised me with the dollar figure.
So, I think he's actually thinking it's a bargain at seventy-two hundred, but hopefully.
Like, I don't know anything about AC units, so I'm not like.
I'll, I mean, it is kind of like another big public area and a place for people to get reprieved if they don't have their own air conditioners.
What? It's busy too.
Yeah, super busy.
Activities and everything going on there, so it's something that's.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the replacement of the air conditioning unit. I guess we'll just put a contingency not to exceed the initial quota seventy-two hundred dollars. If it looks like it's gonna be a larger repair, then they can come back to the board.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion and a second on replacing the AC units at, let's say, for not exceeding the sum of seventy-two hundred dollars at this present time for the Nottingham Library. We do have a motion and a second, we do a roll call vote.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Masruan.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Well, it took a little out of the funding budget too. Thirty-two minus seven or is it thirty-two minus eight plus seven?
Thirty-two minus eight minus seven.
She's got the calculator.
About seventeen thousand. Additionally, while I was getting the quotes for the camera system and the key code, I reached out for the highway garage as well because that's been a topic of discussion, so I just figured maybe they could bundle and, and give us some type of savings. I'm not sure that this is reflective of that, but just food for thought while we're doing security around all town buildings to put in a camera system at the Public Works Building, the highway garage. Four cameras exterior, we would be looking at thirty-eight hundred dollars. I was looking at the highway department budget because we've been running on short staff thinking there might be a little bit of leverage in that budget to be able to pull from, but the cost of the subcontractors that we're using to supplement the fact that we don't have or we didn't at the time have the help, that's, that's absorbing the savings in the budget. So, I, I would not recommend funding from there. There is three thousand dollars in the budget for the highway department building maintenance, but that still doesn't cover it and if something goes wrong, I would rather have that nest egg to fall back on. So, if this is considered, it would be the most appropriate to expend for the building maintenance expendable trust fund, but we've obviously just taken care of over fifteen thousand dollars of the thirty-two remaining, so. If you would like to leave it for food for thought, we can. Maybe for going into the next budget cycle, something, a project that we could look at for next year.
Could you find out if this is a discount based, like a, the bundle deal, buy one, get one free?
I can certainly ask that question.
And the need for the camera system there, this has been talked about for a while.
It's, it's just a security. Obviously, we have a lot of equipment sitting over there as well. Most of the equipment in the fire station is contained within the building itself, but it's, you know, it's for the security of the the staff that's there overnight as well.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm not sure where the initial discussion came up, but it has come up before my time.
I guess to be clear, this is specifically the end of Flutter Street building, nothing over at the.
That is correct.
Personally, I think if we spend enough money, I, I would personally table it for now. Personal feeling.
I agree, based upon the unexpected expenses that have already arisen in the past six and a half months.
Hate to be a stick in the mud, but.
So, how do we move past this? Do we deny the request or do we just don't make any motion, we go into item four? Take a vote?
So, then I'm gonna just put my two cents in on this.
Sure.
In fact, just, you know, everything that is in this town, fires, police department, this building, that building, it's all the taxpayers' money. That's what funds everything that we see. You know, the fact that we have cameras everywhere, that on town facilities, we do it for safety, we do it for personnel, we do it to protect the people's investment, to make sure that nothing's happening. That is the reason for the expenditure of the thirty-eight hundred dollars. Obviously, we can table, think about it, doesn't matter. But there is equipment there that, you know, for vandalism purposes or anything, it's, there's millions of dollars sitting there, trucks and graders and backhoe and excavator and.
But to Matt's point, over at the pit, there's probably, but.
But that's gated to get in. When the gate's closed, you gotta literally break the gate, break the chain and go all the way back and go all the way through. I mean, there's gonna be a little more work than the old pit. But again, you can also take that chain and say, well, there's a heck of a lot more traffic that goes by. There's somebody trying to steal something out of that location because it's in the center of the town, so. I'm just saying that. I don't mind table, that's, if that's.
Why don't we see if this is the discounted price and then we can bring it back next time and if, if the price is what it is, we can see how the rest of, what else we end up spending today and.
Right, exactly. I'm just, again, I just feel, you know, the reason why we're doing this is to protect the investment of the people in the town and the money that they, we've set aside for these, all this equipment to run the town that it's just a bit of security that we're putting on there.
Sure.
You know, if somebody's gonna go in there and break it, they're gonna break it. The good news is maybe with cameras, we can catch who did it. You know, prosecute them, but again, if you're breaking in, you're probably not gonna get any money out of that person anyway, so. Just to, who's guilty or not, so.
Just covers a lot of the stuff, I mean, for like the damage that was on the fire truck, you can put the piece together a little bit.
Sure. Let's see if the guy driving back, if the truck's beat up and it goes back, he was driving the truck where it was, they're gonna see it pull into the building.
Right, same thing. I, I see that here for this one, for like the trucks, we did have a lot of issue, but maybe we'll just verify the price and then, yeah, we'll table that.
Item number four, the following is a quote recommended by Chief Woodman for the purchase of body worn cameras. She's obtained three quotes, this vendor is not only the least expensive, but also the highest rated for their customer service and their warranty. They have been trying them out, their free trial is over and she would like to proceed with the purchase. It is a lease purchase over five years, the total is six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars per year. They created a police technology equipment expendable trust fund at a town meeting this year. Ten thousand dollars was put into that fund and her intention is to continue to add to that fund for subsequent years to cover this expense and other technology needs. She is working on acquiring a grant which will cover half the cost of this equipment, so. Yes. They're body worn cameras?
We do have the cameras in the cruisers at the present time.
Correct.
Just another camera system.
Correct. And I don't think I need to express the essential need for the safety and protection of our officers when they're out of the cruiser.
And that would be a yearly fee though.
It is, for five years, six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. So, when she, once the, so we have to make the purchase in order for her to be able to apply the grant funds. So, once that happens, we'll be looking at fifty percent. So, even though I'm requesting that you approve the purchase and the withdrawal from their expendable trust fund established for technology needs such as this, what will actually be requested from the trustees at the, at the end of the year is hopefully only gonna be half of this amount.
I just saw that it was five year list, so it goes forever. Doesn't stop at five.
We say it's lease to purchase.
Correct. It's a lease purchase.
Okay, so year five, we own it.
Correct.
And then we have to buy new ones because they're outdated.
Possibly.
That's exactly what I was thinking on that.
Okay.
I would do things differently. You got a question?
Um, actually, I just got tripped on, but I just wanted to say that we had.
Actually, could, could you state your name probably?
Yeah, this is regarding this one particular thing.
Yep. Cindy Bloom, Seventh Dwight Road. I know previously the police department had thought they were gonna get funding for some equipment. They didn't get their request in, in a timely manner and they didn't get the funding. So, I just wanna say, make sure they get the request in, in a timely manner if you're gonna go forward thinking that it's only half the cost.
Speaking in terms of a grant application?
Correct.
Okay.
Because that was a problem previously. Do you know why this is dripping?
Uh, no.
Ondensation, I would assume.
Is it water?
Let's hope.
That's all water.
So, we have the, right in front of us right now from the attention of Chief Woodman, the expenditure of police fund for technology. The expenditure right now of sixty, of six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars to purchase seven body cameras for the officers of Nottingham for their protection and town's protection. And with the.
Looks like we actually get eight. It's kind of weird, we buy seven, but then there's one underneath that's included.
Oh.
And then there's a backup.
Okay, so for nine, sorry, I was looking at the seven things. Under the anticipation that we hopefully will receive the grants for half the cost. But again, the fund, because they have the ten thousand year already in the fund, this, this is gonna be funded no matter what. Whether they have money left over after this extra money to be put aside for something else that they might need. So, this is not really costing any extra that the town attorney has set aside. We're just hoping that they get the fund, they get the grants, that they can have more money to improve the technology and stuff that they might need.
I think this was her original goal with that.
Right.
But I do wanna, I think it is eight cameras though, right? Did you say nine?
It looks like, well, it says seven and one.
It's eight and the docking station.
Yeah, that's the camera service. The data plans for the camera service.
And then it says backup, I don't know what the.
The backups.
And I see.
They all say the same thing, generation twelve point five body camera service one, generation twelve point five body worn camera service.
Yeah, so that's seven plus one is eight and then the third one is the backup.
So, there'd be a total of nine?
But there's eight cameras, if you look at eight body worn camera accessories, right?
Accessories.
And maybe one's on a docking station.
Right.
So, yeah.
We have a motion for the expenditure of, we're looking for Ellen, right?
Yes, please.
Approval of us for the expendable of the six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars for the purchase cameras. Do we know when they would proceed these cameras?
These are the ones we are currently using?
Not sure if the ones on trial, I would think that they would be new ones.
Okay. Sounds like we might have the ones that were on free lease and if we buy them, they're probably, should come and swap. Sounds like we might have the ones that were on free lease and if we buy them, they're probably, we should come and swap.
Well, I have faith in the department that they are no better than us on this particular item. So if somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, to proceed with the purchase of body worn cameras accessories and all applicable service and data plans necessary for the cost of six thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars per year with set amount to be withdrawn from the police technology equipment ETF.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and we have a second. We'll call vote.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, Asher.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Tim Davrio.
Um, there was some general correspondence that was put in your pocket, I, the packet, and I believe it was emailed to you as well, um, just to put it out there and see if there was any response that's to be generated on it. The first one was from Skip Severance and it was regarding the fire chief and procedures used to terminate his position. Uh, this was information that he was gonna provide to you for his appointment last week. However, um, his time that was allocated for him was reallocated to allow Jay Vilshak to continue with his state, statement. So I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review it or if you want to and see if there's, um, any response that's warranted for that. And the second, Jay Vilshak had provided some additional notes in support of the chief and lieutenant. And Lori Anderson has provided, uh, the election duties for the upcoming election, August eighth, August first, excuse me. Um, you're not meeting again for regular meeting until August seventh, so she wanted to make sure that you had this in advance of the election. If you have any comments or I can proceed forward with my informational portion of the report.
But just, well, I guess one question on the election day duties. Are any of us asked or required to become like a ballot clerk or anything like that to help and because I know that, like, well, you've got experience with it, kinda walking around, guiding people?
I also have the training too, so it's gonna be about.
Okay. You pretty much show up here at six AM and then just figure out.
Usually how they've done it in the past was, you know, when one of us had to sit in, even if you weren't fully trained, you'd be in the position of sitting there, uh, helping verify the identification card and handing out the ballot.
Okay.
You know, and the other person that's more trained is the one that's gonna be red marker and lining, check, doing the actual procedure of checking somebody in.
Yeah.
So usually we're just used as the, kinda like the fill-in.
Or wherever.
Or wherever that, you know, that that you need, you know, or somebody needs to go for a bathroom break or something like that. Um, it's usually not the four hour, you know, time slot that they put somebody aside for, usually filling it for like ten minutes or whatever like that.
Okay.
They usually get used, and they've been really good over the past, giving, uh, the board of selectmen um, I don't wanna say easy jobs, but they were you shouldn't be able to screw them up. Shouldn't.
I think she's looking for a little more help from us this year.
Oh, I, again, that's because I've read the email about the skeleton crew and about, right?
Right.
So I mean, I'll be all hands on deck. Uh, I'll be there all day. So I, I'll whatever she needs me to do, I'll be there to help out. That's all I can say about that.
Okay.
You know, we'll see what the turnout is. If it's fifteen hundred, two thousand people, that will be eight. Next.
All right, um, I met with the trustees of the trust funds. They met last Thursday and they discussed four trust funds and CDs that are up for renewal. I brought this up to you probably about a month ago. Um, there are the funds for the highway truck, the revaluation, the fire and rescue vehicle, and the tricentennial. Um, these votes were, these funds were voted to be placed in new CDs, uh, for terms. Uh, most of them are six to nine months. I think there's one that was going in for twelve months. Interest rates are very good right now. Um, we're gonna be looking at yield of up, upwards of five percent. So we haven't seen that in many years, so they're gonna take advantage of it. Uh, for the fire and rescue, um, there was a department meeting held last Tuesday, July eleventh, fifteen officers voted by secret ballot on three options presented. One was to have Deputy Chief Matt Curry assume the duty of chief until the next election of officers in December. Um, option two was for the holding of a special election to elect a new chief. And option three was to turn the hiring over to the board of selectmen. Uh, there was a lot of discussion. This would require a warrant article to be presented for the twenty twenty-four town meeting, plus one year to enact. Majority vote was to keep Matt Curry as the acting chief until the December election and he accepted. Uh, for the police department, Officer Rag has given his notice. He will be going to a neighboring town. We're still experiencing challenges with keeping up with competitive wages being offered. Officer Samantha Lemay will be attending the next available full-time academy, since they were not able to acquire the minimum enrollment to offer part-time academy this summer. So um, that was hopeful, but we were expecting that worst-case scenario, she would be getting full-time academy. So uh, that will be dependent on scheduling for her as a student and however the academy, I think the academy for full-time is in January.
She presently is working for us, so.
Correct, yeah. Um, the Ford F-550 repair is expected to be completed this Wednesday, so we'll have that truck back in our yard. It's been several months. And the other one that's in repair at Coastal, uh, that was supposed to go in the shop last week, so hopefully we'll be getting that one soon as well and we should be back to full equipment status. Um, at the recycling center, the utility truck that was transferred over there broke down when Wayne was trying to haul the cans to Harding's, uh, the day before Independence Day. Um, it was towed to Allen's garage for a repair estimate. Uh, the cost for the repair is six hundred dollars, so it's in the process of being repaired and then that will be back on the road. I'm expecting probably this week. And, um, the last thing is I have a prepared statement for you to consider. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review it, if you have any comments or if you wanna proceed with issuing it regarding the Nottingham Fire Rescue Department complete investigation.
Are you looking for that to be read or are you looking for that to be posted?
Um, I did put it out to Ben, who was not able to be here. He did request that it be read.
Are we gonna post it also?
I believe that was the intention. Do we have a Vanna?
We have a, I have it to say, do you wanna read it or?
You have, are we, or is everybody good with the statement as written? Would be the first part.
Right.
And if you're good with it, then we can read it, make a statement.
I'm good with the statement as written.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I read through it. I'm fine.
Well, since the information provided here, my question is, I mean, we can read it out now, but everybody's gonna wanna read it on their own, so. You know, because you can read it out now, but no one's gonna remember half the things that you've said in here.
Correct.
So, I don't know, I don't really, I I look at this towards the advantage of reading it out loud right now or just, or literally just posting it for people to read on their own. You know, time-wise and then.
Right, I mean, I'm happy to read it if that's what you wanna do, but.
I mean, it's up to the board. If you wanna read it out loud, I have no problem reading it, having Steve read it out loud, go right ahead, but just time-wise.
I agree. I think posting it is, give people an opportunity to read through it versus us reading through it now and they're gonna read it online tomorrow anyway.
Fine either way.
Uh, where would this be posted? If we posted online, would it be under the selectmen's or would it be under, you know, front page? Are we gonna?
Where would you like it posted? I can put it under the announcement section. I can put it specifically under the board of selectmen page.
We can put it under the announcement section. Just a blast on the front.
It'll get the most feedback there because it's right on the homepage.
That's what I wanna see. Perfect.
Okay.
Could you email it to me also, please?
Yes. So if you're okay with the statement, I would just request a motion to proceed with signing it.
Okay.
Okay.
And then have, to have a copy, there, none of them are marked draft, so you can sign, just make sure that one document gets your, all of your signatures.
I'm gonna start, I'll slide it down.
But you need a motion to, uh, accept it as written.
Uh, I don't think I need a motion, but by signing it, we're all accepting it the way it is, but.
Okay.
I have a list of brief items that I only discussed in non-public. Um, and then other than that, you have several items from last week that were discussed. Uh, they're not listed out on the agenda, but I have the summary and draft meeting minutes that we can go through.
Where would you like to start in this pile?
I can go with the gasoline storage tank for the Smoke Street pit.
Sure.
I'm sorry, did you wanna do your assessing items first, jump ship?
Doesn't matter. We'll get, we'll, we're gonna do that right before we go to non-public. And we just keep going down, it's that's the last.
So the information in your pack is this is the information that I I failed to bring with me to the last meeting, but this was, um, Fawn's outline of the advantages to having a five-hundred gallon above-ground gas tank at the town pit. Obviously, the the biggest advantage is we would be buying the gasoline and fuel and saving forty to fifty cents per gallon than what we're receiving at retail.
Do we know how, it's probably in some budget somewhere, um, how many gallons the department roughly uses in a year, anyway, that kinda helps see if, well, payback on this.
I I can get the information. I think most of our purchases made on the WEX card, so we can get that from there.
I was just curious. I don't know, I mean, we have five cruisers, but I don't know how much we actually.
Well.
Gonna be sizable.
It's gotta be at least, you know, five cruisers, that each cruiser probably takes, what, fifteen gallons?
Probably higher than that, probably like twenty, twenty-five, not a ton, but twenty-five gallons. You're probably about a hundred and twenty-five gallons per cruiser. I don't know how often we turn them over, though.
Right, I mean, for like, per week, like, we're probably gonna cross, we're always thinking like, you know, we gotta, this is gonna get sucked up a hundred gallons a week, it's, we're gonna use that, is every month, it's gonna be filled once or is it gonna be built? I mean, the good news is it's saving us money as long as, this will be used by highway and it'll be used by, we've just police.
It can be used by highway as well.
The new truck, the black truck is gas. All the other department trucks are
Diesel.
Diesel, so the only one from the highway department
Is the utility.
Is that black one that we just bought.
And I'm not sure if you've all had a chance to go over to the pit or not, but if you've seen the fuel cube, I have a picture of it. It's literally just a rectangular cube that.
Would this go, had to go over, would that go, this go beside it? Is that the plan?
And we have a generator over there, so if the power goes out, then we still have the ability to pump.
Well, now, here's a question for you, not that I don't trust people, but it's not like I know.
It's, um.
Will the camera, the camera at that, will be able to to watch who's pumping, who's not pumping?
Well, no, because the camera we're talking about is for the highway garage, not the Smoke Street pit.
I understand, but that's what I'm saying, we're gonna have to sort of the Smoke Street pit.
It is, um, it's a digital meter. It has, I I mean, you can't just go there and pull the nozzle and pump on your own, you have to.
Probably a key card.
Yeah.
Like the state uses.
As long as you have, as long as we know who's pumping, when they're pumping it. There's a digital record of who's tapping it on. That's what I'm more concerned about, you know?
It's going to be the same control that we have on the diesel tank that's over there.
Just, does each employee have their own cards of, to John's point, it identifies who's filling what?
I'm not sure.
I mean, not to micromanage, but.
So then, the highway department, they exclusively go to the pit and get filled up there and then, I mean, I feel like one truck would take most of that, like, how often does Hartman come to our facility? Like, is this a relatively?
He could come every week. That wouldn't be a problem.
Okay. And then are we expecting, like, would, uh, Chief Woodman just put out, that's where the cruisers get filled up all the time? Or is it like a convenience thing if they're driving by, they would?
For the cost savings, that would be the primary use.
Good.
I mean, if they don't have to do the additional, so they're obviously at the device of liars when they're open. I guess their pumps don't stay open twenty-four hours. So if it's overnight shift, they're traveling out of town to fuel up anyway, so you have the additional mileage going out of town.
And this tank is EPA-approved.
Yes.
And it's all safe lighting in over there, like, there's stuff over there? Are we setting up something else? Are they gonna be driving over into a dark gravel pit to try to fill up their cruiser and to save thirty cents per gallon?
There isn't.
Yeah, I don't think there is.
Streetlight, one.
Is there a street light over there? I'm trying to look, can you?
Which is where that is.
Got a spotlight on the car.
They do have a spotlight on the car.
Is there anything additional needs to be done to prep the area? Like, do they need to put down a cement pads to pump the gas or anything like that? Or like those poles, the barrier poles, to make sure somebody hasn't hit it?
Right. And looking at the picture of the diesel cube right now, it's, there's Jersey barriers that surround it, so I assume we would do the same thing. And this one appears to be direct on the ground.
Interesting. Look, huh. It's been twenty years since I dealt with the EPA, but they were pushing into that you had to have a containment system where the vehicle pulled into, so it just, it had to be concrete, had to have a little lip. So if there was a spill, it was contained within this.
Especially with the river right there.
Yeah.
Well, this is gonna be, what, four, five hundred, six hundred feet away from the river right, at the gate, so. But it's eighty-five hundred dollars.
This is, yeah, it's just on the other side.
Turn a saving fifty cents. I mean, it's, it's good for gallon, but right, you know, you, it's gonna take a while to, uh.
To look at it for, I I see the need for like the emergency backup and the cost savings will at least provide some sort of payback instead of just, you know, like a fire extinguisher you buy and you hope you never use, you're never gonna get your cost savings for a fire extinguisher. There will be a payback on this. I just don't know how long it's gonna be.
Well, I think it's also the need.
Yeah.
It's not just the fact we're gonna save money.
Right, that's what I'm saying, like, there'll, there's an emergency need here, like she's saying, she basically ran around through five cruisers until they were almost out, until they could finally get them to go down. Like, we don't wanna be at that situation at all. I mean, the heavy rains up in Vermont and roads being washed out, even in, like, Alton and everything like that. If we had another catastrophic flood and that bridge is sitting underwater or gets washed away, probably means that one's gonna get washed away, maybe cruisers can't make it out anyway, but I see the need for it, just, I think we're gonna have to request some more information of how the setup is out there and if, uh, we may have to see if the current.
Well, the other question is, um, you know, she was gonna look to see if she could somehow squeeze this into her budget, but I look at this as being a town-wide advantage, especially if the highway department's gonna be using it as well, so. Um, this would be something that I would look for you to consider, once we have all the details, whether it needs a concrete pad.
In, in that picture there, was there a building behind that?
There is, yeah. It's the little white building and it's right next to her little, um.
And that has electricity at it or not?
Yes.
So.
Well, no, there's a.
There's a power pole, like, right behind that.
The building has electricity, was what I was asking.
It's gotta be a panel someplace, yeah.
All I'm saying is if, if we do put this to maybe make it safer, would be the addition of some lighting, a spotlight onto the. All I'm saying is, if, if we do put this to maybe make it safer, would be the addition of some lighting, a spotlight onto the tanks or something, just for most of the highway departments are during the day, but the cruisers, seems like they'd be filling them up at night.
Okay.
A few other things to think about. And to Steve's point, maybe we need to make sure that the current setup is not, not in violation. I would like to know, before we go any further on this, is you know, with other things in the past, you know, is this eighty, is that up and running, all done, there it is, and there's not a, well, we're gonna do the pad here, but we're gonna get it from this guy here, who's gonna bring down the pad later, you know, that might be another thousand dollars you have to add to fix that spot there, or this here.
You're required to have an extinguishing system or something?
Right, you know, I don't know, or have a hazmat thing that needs to be there or something, um. Again, I'm still, I, I understand, but. Maybe a bigger can of worms. You know, I think the fact of using it, I mean, them going at nighttime, you know, if you're here to start your shift and your car, you get, it's empty, you just go fill it up when, at the time wise, and, I mean, if you're running empty at one o'clock in the morning for some reason, that's just poor planning. You know? So again, I'm not, I can't say I'm not against it, but I'm not a hundred percent right now sold on the idea.
I think we need to do a little more research on it, but.
All right, I have some, I have some questions that I'll go back and get asked. So tabled.
Next. How do we wanna put this on our
Eight, seven, I don't think.
Independent items? So that we know that it's gonna be there.
Okay. Uh, the next would be the playground equipment, that quote for the repair of the existing, and option for replacement, or other considerations.
So, I, I did look here at the pricing, if we did purchase, there's no timelines in here, I didn't see.
Mm-mm.
So I see in the one with the broken, the picture with the broken piece, she says, the timing for this project would be September, but sometimes playground equipment takes a while to purchase. I didn't know if there was anything there that she had a timeline, like, oh, we could get this, and is she expecting, are, are these installed prices, or are these?
No, these are prices for the pieces.
Just being placed on a pallet and set on the ground?
Yes, and then we would have to figure out how to get them installed, whether it's volunteer-based.
So, I mean, I've. Well, we got volunteers to spread all that, uh, bark once out there last time it came.
So the, and, so if they were to install, we're looking at fifteen hundred dollars.
In addition.
That.
That's part of the.
I think that's to replace the tube.
The tube, if we were to have them fabricate.
That's, that fifteen hundred dollars is just for them to show up to place that plastic tube in place, that's not to install.
Not to install a new piece of equipment.
Total came up to close to seven thousand.
And we have to dismantle the piece that's out there. Well, if it's just a tube, it's like, I don't, the fifteen hundred dollars is basically to take that one tube down and put it up, like, that's kind of an exorbitant fee for taking a tube out with probably twenty bolts, um. Then, if you look at, if you, yes, if you go to install anything new, you have to tear down what's there, install something new, and then there's. There are footings that are put in the ground that are, that it's, that it's hooked on to, to keep it stable, is it? I'm sure there's some concrete in there. I'm sure, I'm sure the new system's not gonna just magically line up where the old one was, and that's, doesn't happen in. It would be a. A perfect world. So I've had some thoughts about that, as I have a lot of kids that play on this playground, it's either I'm down there for soccer, or whatever, we, we do use the facility a lot. Town of York and a few other places have more of a natural playground, which can generally come up to be a little bit cheaper, we have the hill there, they, I think in South Portland, they have kind of a similar thing, you integrate the slide into the hill, it's like a better slide, there might be like rocks, some poles jumping, things like that. Feel like overall, the, it fits the natural environment of our community better, and doesn't look bright orange and pink, I think it could be something, I just didn't get enough time between last week and now to put together anything to be comparable. Hmm, the seven thousand dollars to just replace one tube, even if we look at the forty-six hundred dollars to just replace a tube, technically removing their installation, I'm sure we could handle that, but that's a, that's a lot of money to just replace a tube, and then if you look at the other ones, you're at twenty thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars for a plastic structure that has a limited lifespan, and is gonna require significant installation involvement from either the community, or more cost.
Do we know if that tube is structural to the?
No, the units are vertical poles, it's not actually structural, but it is the.
Could we take that tunnel out, and still functionally?
You could, but it is.
Drop on the ground. Cause it, there's a hole.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, you'd have to change it, but it's like the main attraction of the play structure, like, at that point, it's just, just tear the thing down.
Okay.
It's.
There's, there's no tubes in the new ones.
Yeah. So I don't know, you know what I mean, like, we could, you place like large boulders, you do some other things, I didn't have any time to get the pictures to provide an example, but I think that, that mostly is just the maintenance of either utilizing our highway department to help set stuff, or whatever. Think we could change it up a little bit, but as it is, I'm not really comfortable with any of the pricing from what I'm seeing here, even though I agree that this is a very heavily-used structure between the summer programs and everything else that it gets used, it's, it does get used a lot. I tried emailing a company that does this, but I have never received a return email.
So is it currently being used, or that blocked off?
It's got like caution tape kind of put on it, just kind of ripped down by the kids, and they're still going through it, but it's it's a rather large, it's a.
Pretty ridiculous.
I think the crack happened on the seam, and then finally somebody came and kind of hung on it, and it just
Naturally, they did.
Ripped down.
Somebody thought it'd be fun.
Yeah. If I can find.
Just know if there was a better way we could seal that off, and still make it usable, but.
So I know that when the school replaced theirs five, six years ago, probably, they did a community build, and so, I mean, it took, we were there for six hours, it was done.
Right.
And, I mean, something this size, and, and the school's playground equipment is much more expansive than this one piece, so I, as far as getting it installed, I don't think you have a problem, people from the community come in.
Do you remember what happened with that one in terms of like needing holes dug, or footing, or anything like that?
So, volunteers and the, and the company came the night before and put all the footings in.
Okay.
For it that needed to be installed.
And then the physical structure took about six hours the next?
Well, yeah, all of those structures, so they just put groups of volunteers with schools at each one.
Well, I can see the need, cause I have been here and watched, you know, just from coming to meetings, the activity that level that's out there, supposed to be where the kids are playing baseball, that, you know, for what we spend money on in this town, ah, for equipment, tools, and stuff like this, I mean, you might not consider it that, but this is a intricate part of the town that is used by hundreds of kids um, and families.
And there is money in the revolve and rec fund to pay for it.
Correct. Chris?
Yes.
Isn't that what it's?
Well, it, she has a, um, she says she has a playground fund that would cover the purchase, but it's going to near deplete it, so we'll have to talk about adding funds back into that for future.
I mean, the fund was set up for the purpose of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we're not going against the norm of what the, what we're trying to do with the money. Right?
So I guess my only question would be, would we tonight go with a pre-made structure, or do we let Matt or somebody else investigate?
My only, my only concern with something natural would be from a liability standpoint, I mean, at least with these structures, they're, they're tried and true. Um, we know what we're getting as a result from them, I mean, these, this company in particular, Utili Play, um, they're one of the, the largest providers of playground equipment for schools and, and recreation, so, I, I mean, I guess I look at that as being probably the safer of the option, rather than, you know, creating a natural rock slide, or.
It's a, yeah, it would be physical slides, there were some pictures, it's, you lose, use more things like logs that they would be on and stuff, it's just climbing structures or whatever, um. But, I mean, you, you hear the things kids get burns on the plastic slides too, and stuff, I mean, playground equipment is inherently.
To come with a risk.
Right, I mean, it's. You use wood, a kid's gonna get a sliver, and they're gonna.
I recommend metal slides.
Yeah, tho- those are fun, get a little polish on there. Hey, it lasts forever.
Hey, you ran a hose down it first.
But, I mean, just quickly, this is any of the stuff that they do. I have actually, uh, an old friend from high school that, that they did. Yeah. So he's obviously out of that business now, but. Just stuff.
So my only concern is timing, is that, you know, I talked to Courtney about it, and September would be like the earliest it would get here and potentially installed, is that if we keep putting it off, is that, then most likely if we do something natural, would have, natural probably take longer to install, cause you're talking about doing landscaping.
You would have to put, yeah.
Yeah, um, is that, then, go ahead.
So, on this fall, since we're, that's, we're talking fall sports, you've got, what, three soccer fields we run across the thing here?
In the morning, yeah, and then it's two after ten o'clock.
So, but again, this is gonna get lost.
Oh, yeah, it's probably the most used is during soccer season, I would say, on those Saturdays, and then.
So for time-wise, we're gonna get it fixed, and we're gonna get it done as a positive for the community, you know, I mean, you don't wanna, we don't have a broken playset for a year outside.
No.
That doesn't do anybody any good, it doesn't do the town any good, or the residents, and they're, when they're coming here, you know, I'm sure the parents would like to talk and have their kids be over there playing, just saying that, you know?
Or drop them off.
Well, what is the timeframe to do it?
Well, we just said right there, we'd probably look at September, if we did, if we made, if we got on the vault now.
Is that realistic, September?
When I talked to her, that's what she felt.
Okay.
She had one preference over the other, like, what is the exact funds in her?
I don't have the rec revolving fund balance.
One's obviously four thousand more than the other.
I don't have those in my list of available funds.
I think there's like three twenty on the rec revolving.
What'd you say?
Over three hundred thousand in the rec revolving fund, the playground fund, I think it was closer to sixteen or seventeen.
So if she can keep it within her budget of that amount right there, without expenditure anymore onto the town, I mean, that's something that I would be
You're talking about moving forward with a new structure?
Right, yeah, I mean, fixing the old structure doesn't make any sense, in my mind.
I agree.
But, you know, I'd like to keep it all within a budget-wise, if she has that fund for that, you know, even if we are gonna deplete it, we're depleting it for a good cause, I don't know what else we could expect to be expenditure right now on that money, or what she would be expecting, or possibility of coming to, having to come to ask the board for something.
Well, I think she said even the, the spinny things that are out here, when they had to replace those, those were like five thousand dollars apiece, so it's, it's just a matter of like what needs to be replaced as they come.
That's the point, rebuilding the fund, so this would be the largest purchase, probably for that fund, hopefully. There was the two that were highlighted, is there one particular that, um, was more strongly favored?
She did not specify.
Us saying, let's just go with the cheaper one?
She just said she separated out her top choices, that make the most sense with the playground use.
So she wants us to decide for her? Probably how much we wanna spend.
Yeah. And looking at the catalog online, I think the, the middle one, and thinking about if you're spending that type of money, has the most for kids to do. The one at the top, it's really nice, but other than the two slides, um, it doesn't have a whole lot more, um, at least that one has monkey bars and scares me to death when my kids get on those things, but whatever.
I'm gonna put it up to you, I mean. So if we go, if we go to the middle one, it sounds like we're gonna deplete her fund fully, which was sixteen thousand, so then she'd require an additional.
I was just thought, I, I know it's, and it was under twenty, I think that's in the playground fund.
Yeah, but I agree, I think the middle one's like. So I, I.
A deal.
I'm gonna say, I don't have a preference on either one. Yeah. I mean, I'm more looking at this towards as, as, as a budget, uh, problem and, and money-wise. Yep. You know, I'm not looking at it as to, I mean, again, that's probably, that's just the way I look at it, I don't have kids that are running around on them or using them. I mean, you, the parents that, you know, have kids and that seeing your friends' kids go and run around on it, I mean, the difference really isn't that much between one or the other.
Right, monkey bars always, uh, me as a kid, I mean, I didn't give a hoot, but I did have a granddaughter that broke around on a monkey bar, is that something that is prone to accident, I guess? I don't think so, but.
My kids are gonna have accidents no matter what.
Yeah.
Your kid could be riding down the street on his bike, hit something, and fall over, and break his arm, and just.
Yep, no, I get it.
I think they're all safe, you know, whether somebody gets hurt on it, it's just a matter of that's
Chance.
Yeah, it is what it is, you know? So, on this particular item, I'm willing to go with what you guys suggest, so not to put it off on it, but. Are we holding it to just the amount of her? Are we looking to just pick one, or holding it just to the amount of her playground fund? So that was the question, the playground fund might not have enough for the middle one.
She would have to, I, I think for both of these options to purchase new, she would have to u- uh, use all of her playground fund, plus use some from rec revolving.
Okay. Yeah, but how much is really gonna come out of rec revolving, that she's gonna need to purchase, cause.
I was just gonna.
What's that? So it's twenty-five hundred dollars, if we want the middle one at the eighteen-five, right? Yeah. Out of a three hundred thousand dollar budget. Should be able to find that one percent. Think we can make it happen. And again, as I reiterated this before, this is a I find a necessity for the people of Nottingham and their kids, for all the activities that happen at this location, to have that kind of, um, facility is prudent. I agree.
Personal fans, we should put it back to the rec department, make them make the decision what they need for playground equipment.
Well, she did, she said she wants one of these two.
Yeah.
So.
Well, which one?
I think she's saying it depends on if we're willing to pull the money out of the rec revolving fund. The twenty-five hundred dollars, sounds like there's sixteen and change in there, so the top one's fully funded, and is a little bit smaller than probably what's even there currently, second one down would be equivalent, maybe even a hair bit bigger, would require additional funding.
Well, she's willing to take out a rec revolving.
Right. Third one has another tube, I think she's just scared to go with it. She can circle it. Well, as our town grows, kids grow, rec department's growing every year. I don't see how getting a smaller place that's gonna benefit anybody. I think we're kinda, if you ask me, I think we're kinda, that middle one, the eighteen, you know, if she's got sixteen, then it's twenty-five hundred. I mean, that seems to be the most logical way to go with what we're looking at for usage, people.
Yeah.
Growing town.
Yep.
Go ahead, Steve.
Can we take the money out of the revolving fund for the twenty-five hundred bucks? That price does include shipping, doesn't it?
I don't know. This, it's just kind of a, this isn't, doesn't seem like an official. I don't know if that's an official quote. I don't know what it is. It says quotes for equipment. Equipment booklet. Right. Do you have the equipment booklet? Is that the difference you have? Let's see if there's any other documents in there that. Is this the same company? I think so. Here, she said that she made copies, but then she gave you a master equipment booklet. I don't know if that's that one.
That's the one right there.
Yeah.
No, it says plus free freight with an aster. But you have to purchase between, so that is the freight is included. And it says offer valid from July first to October thirty-first to get the sale and the free freight.
Is that the forty percent off price?
Yeah, that's the forty percent off price.
So we about beat this horse to death.
Yeah, pretty much.
So I say we make a motion to approve the, uh, purchase of a new playground equipment. Um, if it exceeds what they have in there, playground equipment fund to withdraw it from rec revolving.
Is that a good motion for you?
Do you wanna set a cap?
Out of cap?
Like not to exceed X amount?
I would think we would want to.
So we, the price is listed in the catalog is plus the shipping. It says eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Do we wanna put a cap at nineteen just to make sure that it doesn't go any over than that number? Just in case we are missing a certain
Sure.
item or something that's, I don't see that to be the case, but there won't be any expenditure of.
Well, this pricing is probably a little dated at this point.
Well, it actually, the sales, no, it's right on. Sales started.
I mean, it says it's good until October, right?
Yep. Yep.
So not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars.
Uh, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have, um, a second by Tim. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, mushroom.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
One less tabled item. Uh, the next item is the oil tank at the front of the town hall. And I pulled together an excerpt from John Scruton's town administrator report from January, uh, which stated, "The underground oil tank, which is long overdue for closure, high-risk leaking and very large environmental costs, removal was estimated at that time for fifteen thousand. Replacement would be two above-ground tanks, three hundred and thirty gallons, and piping estimated for approximately seventy-five hundred dollars, which is not including some type of a small shed to secure and reduce extreme low temperatures." Um, closure costs would be far, far higher if there were leaks, but preliminary tests indicate that there are no leaks at present. I did have a conversation with, uh, Clarence from Bodat and he said that with the, um, with the blends now, we're not at risk at, for, um, extreme low temperatures for the tanks being stored outside like they were before. I'll take his word because he deals with it every day, but, um.
I think he's wrong, but we do need, I mean, if you bought a blend, that's fine, but if you're buying too oil, it'll congeal when it gets down close to zero. So buying a blend would be at a higher cost. Now, rather we can get away from a blend with a, some kind of shed to put it in, um, the shed to put it in is only good if you get some kind of heat in there.
The other option that we were talking about when we were doing the underdrain, um, and cutting through, he said, you know, you could always put it in, you could put the two tanks in the rec closet and then you wouldn't have an issue whatsoever. However, that then eliminates portion of the storage.
I don't like that idea.
And how does he propose to get the pipe in there?
Well, that was the other part of it too. That would have been the ideal time to do that while he was working on the underdrain.
So this was also, the funding for this, um, was coming out of our.
ARPA.
ARPA. Now, we have, I'm going over memory.
How much in the ARPA?
One thirty left in ARPA?
Um, one hundred and five thousand once the backdoor was received.
Trying to be close on my memory. It wasn't too far, but a hundred and five. Now, we have to, the time to expenditure for ARPA, we still have over a year left, right?
Correct. It needs to be committed in two thousand twenty-four.
Right. Doesn't have to be spent. It has to be committed. Correct. We have a system that is not leaking according to our tests. And we don't have any money in our building fund because we're obviously down to thirteen thousand now and that. So that's gone for this expenditure in case something else comes. I don't feel prudent that it's necessary to be fixed at this particular time, this expenditure. I think when Mr. Scruton was here, he was very diligent about putting out, pointing out everything that was wrong, right? And we got a huge laundry list. And so far this year, we've tackled a big laundry list of, of items, all right? But this is one of those things where I don't think the fact that we're showing no leakage and it's just one more year, you know, I don't, we can keep, I'm not trying to push the buck because I know it needs to get done, but for the amount of money we've already spent and the fact that we still have a year, whether we go and drop the total on this amount was to replace everything was, Ellen?
Fifteen thousand for, for removal.
Yeah, that's just removal.
And then seventy-five hundred to.
Where did the quote come from?
What's that?
Do we know where the quote came from for the fifteen thousand?
This piece of paper.
I know. Yeah, exactly.
I can look back.
So let's, let's call it, just for easy math, if it needed something else, let's call it twenty-five grand. Twenty-five thousand, it's twenty-five percent almost of our, our, the, the money that we have, our fund.
Mm-hmm.
I, and you know, we still have a year to go where there be, might be something that's more prudent. Or we could actually take money from this fund. And if we have the ninety thousand next year voted back in for building maintenance, we might have some, a little bit more to play in there. So we could split this cost a different way. That's how I'm perceiving this action instead of saying, let's just take the twenty-five and just.
Nope, I agree. I mean, if we don't have an exact issue now, you kinda look at the issues on anything and we've identified at worst case, we kinda know where we're at.
It's on our radar.
It's on our radar. And then even not to come out of ARPA, I mean, we could just put it as an item going into budget season that we could potentially.
I mean, it has to come out of the ground. There's no doubt about it.
It does, but does it have to come out right?
No, it probably does.
Or can it come out?
Right.
Next year?
Well, I think the other piece is, is understanding what it's gonna cost for an enclosure and some sort of heat source inside that enclosure to.
Right.
That's gonna be additional fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
The CIP as they start looking, cause there was talk that I guess rec's putting a shed somewhere and then we start putting an oil tank somewhere and then we start, unfortunately, this is the visible part. When you come up, you don't want just like crap blocking your nice new playground that you're about to put up there.
It wasn't gonna go directly right in front of the building, so.
Right.
Cause make access for the oil truck delivery. Um, the, the line for the heating system's all coming in from there. So it's.
It's in that nice little flower, what, what's once a flower garden.
I think just keeping it on the radar, moving it forward and seeing if there's another method that we can use to either fund it and probably get a better quote than.
Well, even if the quote stays the same for next year, at least we know the expenditure amount.
Yeah.
You know, or if it goes up. I just don't think that if something else comes up in this next year, because I mean, that hundred thousand we have left, you know, I think we should really think hard. And I guess we're gonna spend it no matter what. We're gonna spend it. But I think we should really take this year, these next six or eight months just to see what, what's there, what might be a, a, a more prudent need. You know, that's, I mean, it's the heat for the building. It's important. This is our town building, but
It's not.
Not weighing the, you know, the fact of doing it, but it's not broken. We could have something that breaks. That's really unnecessary. Or we could say we need fifty grand or whatever, you know, or, or whatever it is, you know?
These two three-thirty tanks seem appropriate for this building.
Yeah, it'd be fine.
I don't know what's in the ground right now.
I'm assuming it's a thousand gallon tank in the ground.
So we're reducing our capacity by a third?
Yeah, it don't matter. They could come every other day if we need them to. They don't wanna, but.
Right.
So are we all in uniform with taking the oil tank and?
Well, I think you need more detail anyway.
Right. For us to be, continue looking into it, but not at this present time.
Yep.
Putting a dollar amount on expenditure for it?
Yep.
Yep.
There you go, Ellen.
All right. I'll put it on for budget discussion for two thousand twenty-four. All right.
Did we finish up on election?
I did. What did you wanna talk about it?
Well, can we hold it here or do we need to move it to the school?
It is being held here. Yes. Um, so Dawn Farnol had provided you with correspondence that she had with the secretary of state's office. Um, even though there are other events going on, they're not happening until later in the day. And Dawn's gonna make sure that the parking isn't an issue. There's gonna be specific area for, um, people to come in that are here for voting.
Okay.
We'll make sure that that's blocked off so that they have the ability to do so.
I know that was an issue. I didn't know if it got resolved.
Yes, it did.
I think the police chief was actually kind of excited to have it here during that night out campaign.
Yeah, it's, it's the first, first one that we're holding. So it'll be a good thing for the community.
For public access and people to see and stuff like that, so.
Okay, the next item would be, uh, the conference room, rec department repurposing of this to the rec department and moving the conference room over to the community. I pulled forward the information that Courtney and John Scruton had presented to you back in May, March.
So one of the things, I spoke to Courtney about this too, because just wanna figure out, they prefer obviously the first option, which is more expensive. But, um, what it does not include is they need a shed for storage. Cause like if you walk into the community room right now, my question to her was where's all that stuff gonna go? She said, well, that's the other piece of this is we're going to need an eight by twelve shed. And her goal was to have it over here. Um, so it's easily accessible to the vehicles to load stuff to get from here to Marston or to wherever they're going with it rather than having it in the back of the building. But that's gonna be an additional eight to ten thousand dollars I'd save in eight by twelve shed. For either option. They need that.
I came last week and did, after we'd kinda mentioned it and did a walk down, Ellen kinda showed me all the, the rooms that we have, options that we have, but definitely.
Nice back there, ain't it?
I had to make it all the way to the back back. Um, but it is difficult too. I, I see we're dealing with an old school building that we're trying to repurpose into office space and community center. So it is, we've got large rooms that are meant to hold forty kids or something like that. And we're trying to hold other things so that, and this, this is the, that's Courtney's office right on the other side of this, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So then they have access right outside. I mean, it, it makes sense to her point. You're out, bathrooms down the hallway, you're at the kitchen.
It keeps all the kids contained on this end of the building.
And they're not running down, going past, people trying to go and register their cars and stuff like that.
And then getting into the upside down.
That is a dark space back there. Um, now, does, was there more stuff coming from, is the CIP dealing with this at all?
No.
No? Are they dealing with the, the dead appendage on the back?
So over the course of the years, this, that, the, the building committee looked at this, the past building committee looked at this. I mean, there's been, that building's so old, the expenditure of, of revamping it is extra met, I mean, just huge. The fact of tearing it down and getting rid of all that, the expense is huge.
Almost more.
Right, so it.
But structurally, isn't it sound?
Yeah, but I mean, I guess, but it's the cost of putting up a brand new steel structure that goes up there and trying to save what's there might not be the.
Why would you put a new steel structure up?
Well, I'm saying if you're gonna, if you're gonna make the building up to code and bring it out brand.
Why not get it?
Again, the, the cost of getting rid of all the material was expensive. I mean, you're cutting it down to nothing. You gotta clean everything. We gotta paint everything. We gotta redo half the whole thing. I mean, there could be asbestos back there. I mean, the building was built nineteen fifty something or whatever, so.
Not that portion.
Okay, I was.
This portion is. That portion's fairly, well, I say it's fairly new.
Okay, well, that's a whole discussion of a bottle of money that we don't have to fix that.
I, I understand that.
Unless you know something I do.
We need the table that we, that's not a discussion for.
That's not a discussion for tonight. I mean, that's a whole nother.
Right.
Trying to fix our dump might be more important than that building, so.
Absolutely.
Recycling center.
Sorry, recycling center. My bad. Old school. Um, but getting on to where we're going, I mean, I understand what Courtney's coming with this, you know, and, and the fact that every year she comes with us with more numbers, more kids, more the growing of their department and what they need and the benefit it is for the town. But, you know, this is a expenditure. I mean, it's a big move.
Yep.
You know, there's not, I mean, will adequately serve the, the board of selectmen, the planning board, you know, when we have full houses in here to be in that room.
I feel that that room with the back wall out should be a little bit.
Should be. Yep.
Better layout for everybody involved.
You wouldn't have the congestion of this horseshoe table. I mean, you could actually set the board table across the back wall and leave more room for, I mean, there's a lot of wasted space by having it this way, but it's the only way that you can effectively be viewable.
If we had a straight wall would be viewable, a straight table would be viewable also. It's just this table's been here for years and we're not spending any money on buying a new one. That's the reason why we got a horseshoe. You know, no one ever said, hey, let's get a new table for the board of selectmen's office here for the front. So we can all sit straight across.
It wouldn't have worked with COVID distancing either, so.
We're not buying, we're not buying a new, uh, new table.
So here's a thought, food for thought.
Bring it up.
So we give the rec department this room. What does she actually need for office space? She probably only needs.
Well, she's keeping all those too.
Oh, I know. And that's what I'm saying. There's probably enough storage in here.
Well, that was.
Maybe it's not the ultimate goal, but it would be a temporary goal so that she could actually come in at the figure she's given us without buying a storage shed.
One of the things too is making it there be a temporary wall. So all the stuff goes back there.
Right.
And then this can be still open. This could, you know, be used to whatever it needed, but that.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with.
Food for thought.
I don't think we need a shed. I don't, I don't think, I hope we don't need a shed.
Have you seen all the stuff back there?
Yeah, I've seen it. Choirs.
Well, that's what I said. An eight by twelve shed ain't gonna help her with that.
Well, they, they haven't cleaned out the stuff that's from, I mean, they've made a good start, I think, but.
That's what she told me. Half is gonna be tossed, but.
You go, well, if you go into the, that area, they're gonna demolish. I mean, the stuff from.
We ain't demolishing here. We ain't doing nothing.
Well, not demolish. I'm sorry.
An inactive portion of the building.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah. Had, had Gary developed plans for both of the attempts or is it more?
I believe he did. Um, and they're not included in this pack yet. But yes, there were some plans. I would just have to, um, I have a whole folder on this proposed idea. On this proposed idea, it's just a matter of matching up the plans to see if they actually. Go in line with the two options that were presented.
So I think, I mean. Option two doesn't seem like to me. An option to pursue, cause I think you're spending money, but it's not on something that is going to really work for anybody. So I think if we wanna look further into option one, I think getting firmer details on number one, does she really need a shed and how big would it cost me? And then looking at the actual plans. And true quotes.
Right. Plus in here, like, the ceiling's higher here than a shed would be, so maybe you wouldn't need as big of a shed, cause you can go taller in an area and stuff like that and. It's definitely a little bit more secure than putting stuff outside. Some stuff, you know, whatever they have may not be weather conducive, but. In this though, what do we have, we would need to have a good plan of how we're gonna implement it, cause we can't. Put two rooms in construction and then we don't have room for anything, so like.
My idea would be to focus on that room, converting that to this space.
Right.
And then having the rec space. Converted after where we established in there.
Okay. And then. That would allow, so then she would just need, we would need to have some sort of temporary area potentially to put. All the stuff that's in that room for a period of time, um, until we did that. If that's the plan. I mean, I, I don't see a.
There isn't a lot left in there now.
I see the, the pros of swapping the two rooms, um. Getting some more information on that and.
So here's an option, just throwing it out there for you. Um, which I don't think we've discussed. Was that we get a full nice draw, plan, setup, everything.
Yep.
And we put it as a warrant article in front of the voters to see if they wanna expenditure the money of this. Thirty, forty, you know, cause I mean, we could even, our audio and visual system here is not the, uh. Best, you know, which is, you know, that in a couple of years needs to be upgraded and redone, and if we're gonna do it. Do we do it right and do it all?
That was the plan. That was part of the original proposal, there's money from the cable franchise.
For that.
That would be used for that upgrade.
As a warrant article?
Yep.
No, what I'm saying for the, well. I'm just showing another way to.
To move.
To move forward with the expenditure of this. As an option. But that would push it off all till next year. I'm just trying to think out of the box and different ideas on way to, for us to, you know, make, have money made, set aside or put aside. You know, cause, yeah, I mean. Offering it up to people as an item. I think you know, if the rec does it with the support of all the kids that they're voting for, the people they are. And the upgrades that we can tell that we're sending to the people of the town, that it might be a, a nice warrant article. Again, I'm not saying we have to, I'm just throwing out ideas to the board.
The only thing I can see is that people are gonna say, you have ninety thousand dollar building. Fund and now you're turning around and also asking for fifty thousand dollars plus your ninety thousand, they may see it as.
Sure.
Adding on more, um.
What is the twenty six five gonna come out of?
It says the general fund is per Courtney's email here.
I think part of it was the rec revolving.
The, yeah, option.
Her.
Her twenty nine four.
Convert this room.
This is a rec revolving fund, the other part, which is not rec related. Her bullet says would come from the general fund.
And I guess the question is, is we have the, the article for, well, no. That, I was gonna say, we have a forty thousand dollar article to address. The facility committee needs. This was one of the things that they earmarked in the report, which we don't have the final version yet, but whether or not we could. Maybe allocate some of those funds, because we're more than halfway through the year now, we haven't expended anything, because we're. The report hasn't been finalized, we obviously haven't put out for, um, a maintenance company to be able to take care of. The needs that that was intended for, so that, that's a question.
So it sounds for us, we. Kinda have an idea of what we'd like to see.
Yeah.
You know, but I think the numbers, we have to see black and white.
And plans.
And plans, exactly.
And at that price tag, you would also have to put it out for proposals.
Right. Yep. And if this did go forward, I think it'd probably be the best time for the transactions to happen would be in the spring. If we try to do it this fall with budget meeting every Thursday with the. Um, with our meeting schedule with. The fall activities around this building seem to be. Um, the busiest time of year. Where it seems like in the February, March, we're not as. Have a meeting again.
Well, yeah.
But it might take us three months in order to, I hope it doesn't, but. To get everything we need to make a final decision on the expenditure, the money, where everything's coming from.
So we're looking for plans.
Plans.
In quotes.
Quotes. I guess we're gonna, we're gonna go, again, this was, again, this was one of the other. You know, nice things about Mr. Scruton, when he brought it up, he had tons of ideas on how to spend money. Uh, on things that potentially the town needed, or things to get done. Um, but you know, again, it comes down to what we're gonna do, how we're gonna spend it and, you know. You know, again, I don't wanna, we've always, you know, I've been here long enough in town, you guys have been here long enough in town. I don't feel, you know, we can do it half assed, you know, use that term, but, or are we gonna go do it right? You know, are we making a commitment to spending this money, because we're looking at it as a future plan of us spending, you know, twenty years as. When we, when we do this project. We're making a commitment to this town, to this project as to be, no, we're not gonna be changing here for twenty, twenty-five years, this is the way it's gonna sit, just like how we, when we took this building over. Twenty, how many years ago was it? A lot.
A few.
You know, we made a commitment for that, so, and again, if we're gonna do a big transfer like this. I just wanna make sure that we're all ahead and that we're doing the right thing for the future and it's not something to.
It'd be nice to have a contract, black and white, not, it'll be, oh, maybe fourteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Right, but again, I mean, we're, we're gonna sit here talking, do we talk about the upgrade and the, you know. Bringing all this old stuff, but do we bring in the new monitors, the new things? You know, for better display area, cause the planning board's gonna use it, the planning board would love to be able to show, have a nice display area when people come in with their subdivisions. You know, to actually show it on a screen where the people at home can see it and, cause now the people at home can't see the thing if they put it up there on the screen.
Right.
Cause this is not in the right angle, it's, it, that's what I'm saying, the, this room has been. Pieced together. Where if we're gonna go do this over there, let's not piece it together, let's design and do it right.
Yep.
So that every faction that's using it is gonna get the full benefit of the, of the project.
And just quickly for this room, do you know if they were building any physical high walls or they using like cubicle partitions? For when they were doing. Knocking this out, just because, I mentioned this before, you start taking a room. Thermostat is over there. Heating units over here, you start putting in walls and this is gonna get all messed up.
It says additional walls or cubicle.
Okay. I think we'd wanna try to leave it as open as we could unless we were just building.
There could be like six foot high walls.
Yeah, as long as it, it's just something to think about, I've seen issues with that, where you start breaking into a space that wasn't designed to have multiple air uses and that. It can become an issue, so look, look forward to that plan. Okay. Back to them for more information, I guess.
But can we put this again as a? Do we need another meeting? And that meeting was, when we had with Courtney about this whole thing was, I mean, we had a whole different board. None of you guys were here when that, that initial meeting happened, that maybe it is time to bring Courtney back again. Uh, just for an initial meeting with this, with this new board. And since we're, we kind of, that was seven months ago and we started talking about this. If we're gonna put this in the forefront, we should all be.
Do you want her to be prepared with the additional information, the plans and?
I mean, the more she can bring, the more she can bring to us is the less questions we're gonna ask her. You know, or go find out, or, you know, cause if she doesn't bring us a lot, we're probably gonna hammer her with a hundred questions and she's gonna have to go get it then, so.
Right, I mean, this email from one nineteen says waiting on firmer numbers from Gary, like, did we ever get firmer numbers in the last seven months and? Is Gary still the go-to for everything? Is the CIP? Like, not the, the other fund you mentioned, the forty thousand dollar building. Rotational fund, like, they're supposed to be bringing us something. Be good.
Build this size, we do need to get quotes, can't just say routinely.
Correct.
Gary, you know.
And that was, I think it's what that, that forty thousand was set for, not just this building, it was set for.
No, it was for all.
All town buildings.
Correct.
So literally to bring in like a property maintenance company that would come in and say, oh, okay, well, we need to replace all the. The bulbs and these fixtures and they would do it or they'd contract it out or.
Yeah.
Whatever the needs are for all town buildings.
You know, if we have to upgrade bathrooms, do we have to do?
Right.
So again, that's why when I was, when I mentioned about the money. You know, that fund is set aside to do upgrades in the building, not for just one particular upgrade, there could be.
Correct.
That we.
All right, chew it up with one. Wave of the wand, gone.
That's.
Yeah, the intent was like if you started having like urinals breaking, addressing one there and then go to the other one fixing, a door rusts out, fix a door, you know.
Exactly, the seals are all gone, the sills are, the window sills are rotted out, you know, if we gotta replace this window or the windows over there that are drafty that aren't doing, you know.
To contract with a property management firm to make repairs to facilities as needed according to priorities determined by the select board and to provide maintenance of facility grounds.
I mean, we're, we're, I'm, for what we're talking about, yes, we could expenditure, I'm just saying. You know, I'm trying to keep our options open, is that the way, would you wanna just say?
Right, and then to take the first thing of money and then build yourself a new office type of thing does not look great.
Exactly.
Thanks for the new office and desk.
Yeah.
I don't wanna do that, there's a lot of things, but.
Well, especially in a building of the age that we're sitting in, you know, we've never actually, obviously. Um, I'm not saying we've did, the town's done a terrible job over the years past, but. We've obviously noticed with problems now that are coming up in all our facilities. The lack of maintenance that has not been done or has been looked over. Um, in the past, that should be addressed.
Yep.
So again, taking care of the small things, even though they might be small, just, they're important, cause they could end up to be bigger problems.
So do you want this table till the next meeting and invite Courtney back?
Yeah, open it up to Courtney, come back with a better, with another presentation again, so we can get this ball moving on.
If she has time at the next meeting, she might need more, that's.
No, she might, absolutely, yeah, but if she wants to get the ball and we wanna get this ball moving on this, I think it's something where. You know, there's always something else coming in front of us.
However, if we're looking for plans and quotes, she'll need more than a week to get that.
So we should maybe go out two meetings and we could ask Gary to see if he might have any of the additional stuff that.
But this is again, what I'm saying is that we. And again, this is something for you guys to just take out, is I'm gonna throw it out there as a tidbit information that. You know, with the years on the board here and even others, we have this discussion right now. You know, and then it, it just goes away and then we're back doing the same conversation, we have three months, if we're gonna have a discussion on this. We should be setting our goals to be focused on these certain items that we're talking about. You know, and not just having the idea, cause again, this idea's been floating around for, for seven months now.
You have to stay on task.
Or a lot.
Get things done.
And I just don't wanna see that the time we're taking tonight. You know, if, if this is something the board wants to proceed with, then. Let's put the, the right effort into it to getting it to that next level where we need to go. And not being just a, a discussion to say, well. Let's talk about it later, cause.
Right, you can't continue, pick your can down the road.
And that seems to happen quite often, and that's what, you know, one thing that's always frustrated me that we. We bring up ideas and things, but we just don't provide action for them.
Right.
So, as long as you guys are all willing, I mean, to go for them.
So the other thing in it, talking about additional expenses, it looks like there's gonna be, they have to repair the heat in the food pantry room?
Yeah.
So the tear down of the walls can be like almost fourteen thousand, thirteen thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, twice, but.
So in addition to all the numbers we're talking about.
Again, that's why.
They talked about putting in a mini split system as being the most cost effective way to, to heat and cool that room.
And again, when we use the term most cost effective, is it the right thing to do? Again, we've always done things the cheapest way out to get it done and then we're in the hole of replacing it five, six years down the road. That's why I say if we're gonna look at this.
Do it right.
Let's put the time and effort to do it right, but again, it's not something we're just gonna. That's why I'm asking you guys tonight, you know, if this is something. Let's put the effort into constantly talking about it and actually. Moving forward to where at a point where we can make a decision.
I think just giving her two meetings at least should, she should have a better, but I agree with you, make it a concrete like we expect to make.
Headway, we're gonna, one thing's gonna change, either we're gonna say no to the whole thing, after we've provided all the information, or we're gonna. Look together to make a valid effort of saying, yes, we wanna do this for the town, we want this done. And then going for the next steps there, whether it goes to more article, whether it goes to. Button.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's just, just what I wanna see, I hope that was kinda clear.
Yep.
Kinda to go along with that, cause it's kinda all the building stuff, I know something happened with the flooring in that gym after we did the repairs, but then again, it just kinda dropped off, cause the building got busy. So do we have any quotes or are we just waiting until the room's not busy?
To, I have a quote to, um. Put tile over where the exposed concrete is right now, that came in just shy of two thousand dollars, it was nineteen hundred ninety dollars and the company that I was dealing with. We agreed to hold off until late August. Um, after most of the events were done, that way, you know, they could just come in and do it, we could block off a time so that it would be. Um, they wouldn't have to do a piecemeal a couple of hours per night, they have to like seal the concrete a couple of times before they actually put the tile over it. The other option is, is do we just leave it the way that it is? And put forth a valiant effort to either propose a warrant article for replacement of the gym floor altogether. Or try to receive some type of grant funding to do so, because ultimately that's what needs to be done. We're literally just talking about repairing where it's concrete out to the exit now. But there's an entire section of tile that's, um, cracked, the length of the gym floor.
See, and then that forty, that forty thousand dollar made, there, there's an expenditure right there.
Yeah.
That's where, even though we.
I think pre-laner.
Show money here, there and everywhere. The money that we have towards what expenditures could be.
Right.
Is not.
No, it's a busy, I remember we talked about it and then it kinda.
I think that's another thing too, we wanna, for these, these issues like this, we should address and get it done.
Alright.
So I mean, is the almost two thousand dollars a necessary expense to patch the floor with tile that's not gonna match, because obviously this is worn down and uncared for. And, and it, it literally is just a temporary fix, the floor needs replacement.
Right, and currently, is there a lip between what's there now and the?
There is, it's.
So I need quasi-safety issue that we've been living with for too long now. So we might need to.
Might need a quote on that.
Well, we gotta do it, at least something to make it safe, even if you filled it with leveling or something to it, make it flat. But. Maybe check and see if there's a way to, instead of tile, just put. If there's been no issues, if Courtney hasn't had like kids falling down, if Karate hasn't had kid, like, that's the biggest thing, is some kid is gonna. Trip the end of his toe on that and fall over or anybody else, but mostly it's kids running, running through there.
I think when they put the tile down, they could level it to the floor, so it'd be a.
They can then, if we're gonna do that option, I'm just saying, is there something, but that's late August. It's a month and a half. If you have a known deficiency that is, you know, a safety hazard, you can't just say. Eh, it should be fine for two months, cause then if something happens in between then and you've documented that you know that there's an issue.
Well, we could buy all this yellow here, just line the whole floor that over the spot and say, hey, guess what? We made it bright yellow, there's an issue, we fix it for two hundred fifty dollar, I don't know.
Horse mounts down a tractor supply, solid rubber, can't. Okay.
Okay, so I will check with Courtney to see, um, how much time she needs and schedule it for a future meeting accordingly.
Okay.
Uh, moving along, we're getting there, um, water test results provided by Frank and Zalbass. I provided them to you, I think, um, Kelly has given you the test results in the packets. I did reach out. I did reach out to Primex to see what we would be looking at for coverage options if this. Um, if this is a result of the town's salting of the roads. It is an environmental issue and because the EPA has not set a standard for acceptable levels of sodium chloride. Um, there would not be a claim that would be. Approved by Primex, so we would not have coverage there.
To that, if his test results, he was, I believe somewhere, he was saying that they were.
Uh, this is, yeah.
Yes.
Kelsey Road and.
So he's bringing up stuff saying that there are potentially too much salt, but there's no actual limit. Besides good standards that.
I don't think you have the full test results in your packet, they were emailed to you.
Yeah.
So current, so according to his memo, current guidelines show seventy milligrams per liter of salt as toxic to plants. That was according to a Google search.
Yeah, but what is, what guideline? Not asking you to answer that, but just saying, well, you know, I can find out whatever I want on Google and just.
Right, what the D E S acceptable limits are.
Is it actually?
With all the rain that we've received over the course of the past two to three months.
Flush is wallow?
Well, I mean, obviously it's going to help to dilute, I would think, with retesting it. You know, having the town retest it makes sense.
So question, he has a, does he have a non-conforming well, like is it a, a dug well, is it a ground well? It's not a.
No, it sounds like it's.
It's not a drilled well.
No, I don't think so, from what I'd read in his first emails, not in here, but.
So the, um.
I.
Water test that he provided. For one thirteen Kelsey Road, it showed the sodium level at ninety-five. And it says in the notation test remarks, there's no EPA limit.
He's just going off from the thing that he has that's greater than seven. Seven zero milligrams per liter is toxic to plants, kind of as a basis, or. His other statement here, when, for health, when sodium is over twenty milligrams per liter is considered a risk for his high blood pressure. See, what's saying, like the house wouldn't be potentially sellable, but I don't, if you took the salt out of it, I don't know if having a non-conforming well would have been a liability. For potential sale anyway. Does anything in the, does the town tax card, does that tell us what his well is at all, do we have any of that? It's just if he had a.
There's nothing on file, there's only subject information.
Was any, is his house older, I don't know anything about this at all. You know, if his house is like an older house or something like that with an old.
It's all right there on public.
Yeah. Cause he, was he the only one with the actual issue, I mean, he was taking samples from around, but I don't know if that was.
Took, um, he took samples from neighboring properties as well as the pond. And all of those test results that he collected were provided.
Alright, and then that, which email was that?
It would have been after he came before the board on June, June seventh.
Alright.
Yes, all these tests are from March and April.
Right. Tests from March and April. When, again, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I understand where he's coming from, I'm not trying to downplay what, what he's doing, but. March and April, you're gonna have the most content because of the, the plowing and everything that happens in February, March.
And in April. We had some late storms this year, big ones, the one that took out the trucks.
Would the testing be different today, I'm again, I'm not here to. You know, I understand his concerns.
So I guess my question is, do we have, you know, do we get it retested, see if everything has dropped lower since then? And then, I mean, it sounds like in the past, he's been able to just have sand applied, no salt. Which I thought, nah, at the meeting, few years ago, that it was mentioned that salt. Just the sand and salt is mixed here, or do we have it separate? How, how, how are they able just to sand there before, just using the third party contractor? If we mix our salt and sand together.
The house was, uh, the age of the house is nineteen seventy-four, according to the tax records.
Alright, it's just not that.
Think we opened us, ourselves up for some liability by saying we're not gonna salt certain roads, I mean, we can limit. The amount of salt we use, but.
Well, the problem with that is, again, we're using an outside source. Uh, private, this, this road was done by a private contractor that was over at Lee. You know, so. I mean, you'd wanna say if it was our full habit of, if we was taking care of the single road, that would be.
Right. First thing I'd like to see new water testing done and determine the level of, um, salt in the, in the water and, uh.
Who would you like to have complete the water test?
I mean, he's, he's coming to us saying he wants a new well, because we're putting too much salt in, but he took samples in March. I just looked quickly in my phone, we had a very wet, heavy snowstorm in the beginning of March, March fifth, I think it was, which. Disabled all the trucks that are now, we're just getting back, so there's heavy salt usage in that period of time, trying to reclaim the town roads. So taking samples in March and April would definitely show high, I just, like you said, he's. I don't know the full liability to the town, cause there's no guidelines for it, there's no anything, he's just showing potentially a.
Well, again, there, there, I don't think there is a liability for the town, cause we still have proof, I mean, this is one person saying that we did something wrong. You've got a town that we're using salt and sand and everything all over of. I don't know, two thousand houses, three thousand houses or whatever, and I'm not trying to be, you know, against what he's doing, but. I don't feel like we're gonna buy him a new well.
From the sounds of it, I didn't sound like the current well setup he has. I don't know, I don't understand why the, the salt concentration is so concentrated at just his house, but.
No, but I mean.
It has something to do with the location of the well, it's only seventy-five feet off the road.
Right, and it also sounded like it wasn't a regular drilled well. Cause he's getting top level runoff contaminant into his well, where everybody else who has a three hundred plus foot. Drilled well is not seeing this because of the. Filtering action of the soil and the fact that you're getting water out from the aquifers, most of the. Most of the top water goes off to the rivers and the streams. I, he had it something, I'll have to find it. Yeah, I just don't know exactly what they want, he wants us to accomplish, except for saying, provide us a new, provide me a new well, but. I don't see anything. Here that says. And his words, when he first presented, were kinda saying like, the real, the real. Person that should be in trouble is Janel Construction, is where he was making his words, like the real perpetrator of the oversalting, but. I don't know if that's exactly true, I don't know how they differ from how we differ, cause it, they're not using our salt and sand mixture, right? This Janel Construction is getting it from the town of Lee and they're just extending up.
Ah, I don't.
Kelsey?
I don't know if that's the case. I, you'd have to find out the thing, we might be filling their trucks.
Okay, I wasn't sure if.
Because they're being used on our road, so I'd, I pretty think it would be our.
Okay.
We're using them just for the, the manpower and the, and the truck itself.
Okay.
Well, I think we're all consensus, we're not buying the guy a well.
But, in, in his email, it says best temporary current solution is a tax credit to compensate for testing, purchase of spring water for consumption. And damage to plumbing and appliances that cost for bringing in non-toxic water for gardens.
Somebody's buying a well.
Do you have any thoughts on, have you seen anything like this?
Yeah, I know, travels.
Have not.
He was mentioning somewhere else that the state was buying other people wells on certain roads or something like that, but he didn't provide any. Think the onus is kinda on him to provide the information, you know, if he. The D O T is, did this in certain spots, whatever, I mean, if he has proof of it and shows, and then we can. Reach out to find out why the state at a certain level replaced wells. But that could have been they knocked the well head out, I have no idea, it just doesn't. Like you start here and then somebody else has a problem with something else and it's hard to prove that. That is the actual.
And again, this could be just the situation of, he has a dug well, it's thirty feet deep, whatever, and you know. It's seventy-five feet from the road, the fact it's not cat property, or who knows, I mean.
Right.
There's. This is a situation where it's nobody's real fault, you would say.
Right.
I mean, is it really oversalted, or has this same salt practice been used on twenty other roads in Nottingham with no?
Or is the sodium coming from someplace entirely?
I don't think that, but again, I don't know, I'm not an expert on the. Trans, you know.
Right.
It could be, you know, this might be that isolated one particular spot that in nineteen seventy-five, the guy. Was able to dig his own well thirty feet and get enough groundwater to be adequate to serve his purpose.
Correct.
It's forty-eight years ago.
Yep.
So. You know, all the other ones, I think maybe on the road probably have drilled wells, but maybe, I don't know why. I don't think we're at fault, I don't think the town's at fault in any way. Uh, so that's why I don't particularly think that we need to. I mean, I understand where he's coming from with the thing, but I don't think that the town's at fault. Cause I don't think our practice is any different from this road than it was on for any other roads.
Or really any other town.
Use that too, yeah.
I mean, this snow pro guidance is, I mean, that's just good cost measurement for us, I mean, the less salt we use in general is just a cost savings. But there's gotta be that, you know, that's something we can look at for. Moving forward anyway, just, but I don't think that's gonna stop the problem, the well's getting salt intrusion, it's gonna get it anyway.
But, you know, with the fact of a new highway department, new things, this could be totally mute for next year. Maybe we'll be taking care of that road and it won't be an outside contractor, maybe. Maybe that's how we address the problem from that situation.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we won't be understaffed, maybe we'll be fully staffed, which the way things are going now, looks, that's possible. And so then we can address this actually, you know, with a Nottingham truck.
Yeah, I think the onus is on him to provide more information, if you think, besides just well tests, if he wants stuff. What does he have for a well, where does he have proof of anything else happening, and we can maybe look at it, but I don't see much more happening from your point of view that. We're really. At fault here.
Are we good?
Good.
Any more questions?
No.
Budget. Budget status. In your packets, you have a copy of the operating budget, year to date through the beginning of July two thousand twenty-three. You have a copy of the twenty twenty-three revenues year to date. And the actual approved budget with explanations just for reference. If you look at the very last page, you'll see that overall, between the operating budget and warrant articles, we have forty-four point five nine percent. Of the budget remaining. If you take the fact that we are more than halfway through the year, we're at about a forty-two percent mark. At the seventh month of twelve months total, so we are in line with where we should be. There are some departments that are in better shape than others. Overall, not bad.
But, we'll use that there, knowing that. Our highway department for the past four months only has had two people. So there's a lot of expenditure money that's, if you added five full timers, I don't think we'd be sitting in the same. Predicament from number wise, we're sitting right now.
Well, and we have a primary and a special election.
Yeah, we pay for. We have a, okay, yeah, didn't wanna, forget about that one, but sure.
Sorry.
Now the board of selectmen is gonna subsidize the cost of that.
Yeah. So. Right now, and this looks like I think we're okay, I mean, we're not bad, but we're not, uh. I would start putting, uh, rainbows and sunshine on it, saying that we're patting ourselves, this is great, but. We're on track. You know, the important thing is if we can keep this to where it is, you know, I mean, cause next year we're gonna have to go. If, when we bring our budget to the budget committee. You know, we need to see that we expenditure the, the amount that was given last year. And that hopefully we don't exceed, or we keep it at that, but then with the fact of selling, the fact that, you know, as we just. Briefly mentioned in our past minutes here. But then with the fact of selling, the fact that, you know, as we just briefly mentioned in our past minutes here, um, you know, the adequately paying of the employees of Nottingham.
Right.
Alright, we are still under, under the threshold of what other towns are paying their employees. Whether it's the fire department, whether it's the police department, where we know it's our librarian, we know, I mean, just look around. So, that should be a cost, um, something to keep in mind for when we get into that season, that-
As we're getting closer to it, I will be providing you with the budget reports, at least on a monthly basis, uh, just so we can keep a, a better eye on it, especially as we get to the point where maybe we may have to slow back on spending. Fall tends to be the, the time to prepare for winter, depending on what Mother Nature hands us, so. But if you have any specific questions as you look through it, feel free to reach out to me. I know this is probably, maybe the second report that you've seen. So, I will start getting them to you on a more regular basis, but-
I just, I might not have an answer to it, but our, the electricity is like super low.
Because we have the solar panels.
That's, that's the difference.
Um, you weren't part of the discussion, but this came up with last budget year two was our insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Um, seemed extraordinarily high. If you're looking for second quotes, again, that was-
For health insurance, are we talking?
Yeah, health insurance.
Well, I mean, we're a January renewal, so if we're going to be looking into that, we need to start that process very soon. Um, the Health Trust Board sets their rates in October. I mean, there are other plans that we can investigate, the Health Trust offers, but if you're looking to go with another possible provider like Harvard Pilgrim or anything like that-
I think more one thing too is the fact that, you know, we didn't understand the number as well as what we were providing or what we were giving to the employees.
Okay.
And, uh, it's a, I don't wanna say it was a tough sell, but it was something where when asked what the, why the fee was the way it was, you know, I think the question was, well, that's the way we've always did it, or went.
That's not a good answer.
That wasn't the answer that we were looking for, is saying that, well, we competitively looked at four different providers, and this provider's giving the best bang for the buck. Not the cheapest, not the most expensive, but it was the best bang, and that's where I think the expenditure should be. You know?
Alright, if I can pull that information together for the budget meeting.
The state retirement, does that have state health with it as well, or are those two generally, like, is there one fund, if you get into that, that deals with the state retirement, it has some sort of higher level insurance with that, or are they two separate things?
Two separate things.
I don't know if they offer like one package. And that's something that a lot of people have mentioned for reasons not coming to Nottingham, is that we are not in the state retirement.
Correct.
And what is, uh, what type of cost is that? Like, is that-
We are at present doing up to a six percent match into a four fifty-seven B to, um, we would, it would require a town meeting vote to enroll in New Hampshire Retirement. We'd have to get approved by their board and then get town meeting approval to enroll the rest of the employees. The, um, required contribution from the employee is eleven point seven seven percent, and I believe the employee or portion would be twenties, I think it's twenty-six point three eight percent. I think the rates may have just changed on July first, not, I haven't looked at them since March when I was dealing with them in prior employment, but, um, so you'd be looking at it twenty percent of, twenty percent increase in what the town is contributing to an employee's-
Cause we're, we're providing six percent right now, so we would go to-
Those participating.
To those participating.
Yeah, and so to roll into New Hampshire Retirement, it would be mandatory participation from both the employer and the employee.
But those, a bunch of people were losing to other towns to get into this. I'm just saying, maybe we would stop the bleeding.
People that are already involved are, are somewhat, you know, close to being vested, because, I mean, they can pick on, they can leave one New Hampshire Retirement providing community and go to another and pick up where they left off.
Right. So, it potentially increases our hiring pool and potentially our, you'd have to look at it too, like, maybe our salary isn't so bad if they're in that retirement type of thing. That might be the other portion, it might be some salary, but it might be the New Hampshire Retirement.
But it could add a hundred fifty thousand dollars to our budget.
Could.
And that's five hundred fifty thousand, we don't have it at a four percent cap.
That's your twenty dollar, uh-
Fifty.
No, I was, oh, your fifty dollar, uh, dump.
Twenty, don't cut it no more!
Alright.
So, it weighs on that idea, so, but that would be a way to help offset the cost?
No, I just, I wanted to understand a little bit if that makes sense.
Well, that's, uh, I'll, thank you for providing this.
You're welcome, if you have questions, like I said, talk to me.
Better reading at home, but there's a lot of things I can see I can highlight.
Thank you.
The last thing that I have is, um, there is some legal correspondence that's been provided regarding Kevin Bassett's questions. Um, that was planned discussion for non-public, and then I have him tentatively set to come before you, so you can respond to his initial questions for the August seventh meeting.
Sure. So, we'll review those non-public in August, that would go with that.
So, we're done with everything else, correct?
We gotta do assessing.
Well, we're gonna do, I know, we have to assess it, we're done from all the other-
On the other table.
All the other, generally, so we'll just- Uh, anybody wanna go through and, and, uh, make motions, or anybody have any questions on the things on the assessing?
If you don't, then we could just take the motions. No, I think the timber yield loan's in my packet.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept timber yield tax amendment on map seven, lot one N.
I second.
We have a motion, uh, and a second, roll call, all in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Scherlin.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
So, make a motion to approve a solar exemption on map forty-four, lot thirteen.
Yep, this one in-
This is decline.
This is decline.
What I thought.
This is due to the location does not conform with how the tax assessment is supposed to be assessed, it's not on the property.
Selling it back to the, um-
Correct.
Provider. Directly.
Make a motion to decline the solar exemption for map forty-four, lot thirteen.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Scherlin.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
And then we have a abatement on map forty-seven, lot seven dash one.
I make a motion to approve the abatement for map forty-seven, lot seven one.
I'll second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Scherlin.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Being the end of business for this, uh, we're going to be going into non-public.
Any public comment?
Any public comment? Nope. Stevie, look at me. Did you wanna make your, well, you had your, think about your, uh, August thirteenth or something?
Yes, I'd like to invite Nottingham-
For your name again?
Steven Soeff.
Thank you.
Thirty-two Dollar Dam Road. Nottingham, New Hampshire, oh-three-two-nine-oh.
Nice.
Uh, one of the nice things about the town is that we've had many traditions. One is that we've had a series of talent shows in the past on Nottingham, uh, Square. That ceased, and we're trying to revise that, revive that whole tradition, which we did at the three-hundredth, and now on August thirteenth, and from three to five P.M. at the community church, we are holding a talent show for anyone who's talented in New Hampshire, regardless of age. They could dance, they could read poetry, they could read from their book, they could, uh, sing, they could play an instrument. It's a great way to honor our local talent. So, we invite you, for your kids, your grandkids, or yourselves, to participate. And if you're interested in participating, let me know. I'm Dr. Steven Soeff, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so, we'll be moving into non-public per, um, well, we're gonna need a motion, but A.
RSA.
We'll need one for A and, uh, one for legal.
I think that's E, isn't it?
Uh, it's over here.
It'll actually be L, legal advice.
Yep.
A and L.
So, A and L.
Alright, make a motion to move into non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, two, A and L.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, vote. Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Scherlin.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Good night Nottingham.